All right, I have 6:30. A call to order, the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council is Tuesday, May 3, 2022. Start with a roll call. Laura, please.
Counselor Savabi.
Here.
Counselor Wheel.
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Gallagher.
Here.
Counselor Sheldons, absent. Counselor Blum.
We can all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Earl.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, I was before you last council meeting to talk about the proposed charter amendment to protect the city's open space, parks, and trails, and in particular, my concern that the charter amendment as written would have an impact on 90 Mead Lane. And since that last meeting, while I haven't seen the revised text, my understanding is that it has been revised to basically exclude, particularly exclude 90 Mead Lane from a definition of open space, as well as the right-of-ways, both of which I applaud. One of my suggestions, but somebody's more persuasive than I was, so hat tip to the city manager. In any event, as a result of that, obviously, then, my comments that I made urging council to take action to sell 90 Mead before the election no longer are as critical. And so I just wanted to come and make that statement. Having said that, I still would encourage council to take up 90 Mead and look at doing something and selling it as soon as possible. My sense is, is that we've come through a period where of rapid escalation, but I think we're going to level off for a period of time, particularly with interest rates rising. And I do think that having those funds in the city's general fund reserve balances would be advisable. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And Dan wasn't even here to see me take less than one minute.
We'll report back to Dan. All right, any other comments? Hearing none. Reports to city boards, commissions, committees? I'm seeing nothing here. I'll move on to consent agenda.
I move to approve consent agenda items 6B, C, and D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you left off A. I take it because Counselor Blum was not here?
I move to approve Agenda Item 6A.
Okay, with the understanding that Counselor Blum was not in attendance in that one? All in favor? Who wants their second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Next, new business. Council Bill 10, Series 2022, amending Chapter 18 in the municipal code regarding federal holidays and construction activity. And that would be... Ethan.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. First, thank you all very much for having me this evening. Before you, I'm going to present a code amendment, or proposed code amendment to Chapter 18. I do want to forewarn that I'm a history major, so forgive any little history tidbits in my presentation. I don't mean to bore. So staff is here this evening to present a recommended amendment regarding the construction holidays listed within Chapter 18 of the municipal code. First, I do want to note that because this amendment is legislative and not quasi-judicial, there are no public notice requirements. However, the meeting this evening has been publicized in accordance with city policy, and staff has not been contacted regarding this topic. In addition, the public is regularly notified of these construction regulations every time a building permit is issued. In addition, the construction holidays and construction activity information can be found on cherryhillsvillage.com. So why are we here? It's staff's goal to update our municipal code in order to stay in compliance with all recognized federal holidays and aid any future updates to any new federal holidays that are established. As you probably already know, the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code regulates when construction activity can take place within city limits. This includes time periods during the regular work week, the weekend, and federal holidays. On federal holidays, no exterior construction is allowed, and interior construction is allowed within entirely enclosed structures between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. On June 17, 2021, President Joe Biden signed into law a bill establishing Juneteenth as a new federal holiday. Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth National Independence Day, is recognized as a celebration of the emancipation of the enslaved people of the United States. This holiday originates from the day the slaves were notified of their freedom by Union Army Major General Gordon Granger in Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1865. This was a couple months after the conclusion of the Civil War. Juneteenth has been recognized by several states since it was first adopted as a state holiday in Texas in 1980. Most recently, the Colorado House passed a bill on April 11, 2022, that would make Juneteenth Colorado's 11th state holiday. All federal holidays recognized by the United States Office of Personnel Management have been previously adopted within the Cherry Hills Municipal Code. This is also the first holiday to be adopted since Martin Luther King Jr. Day in 1983. Shown on the slide before you is the current code language, which reflects each individual federal holiday adopted by the code. This can be seen in the slide with all individual holidays listed. You'll also see other construction regulations and, excuse me, listed on this slide as well. Before you now is the proposed code amendment that removes the list of the holidays from the municipal code and instead states all federal holidays adopted by the United States Office of Personal Management are to be included within the Cherry Hills Village construction regulations. Please note, there's no changes to the hours column on the right or the first two rows of the day column on the left. This proposed change would include Juneteenth as a federal holiday within Cherry Hills Village Code and allow any future federal holiday update to be included without any code amendment occurring. Additionally, to ensure that contractors and those who work in the city are aware of the individual federal holidays that are recognized, staff provides a handout, excuse me, with all construction hours and individual holidays with all permits that are issued. This handout is additionally included on the Cherry Hills Village website. Pretty short presentation, so to wrap things up, provided before you is the recommended motion to adopt the proposed code amendment if council so chooses. In conclusion, just thank you very much for having me this evening, and then I would like to open up for questions if you have any.
Counselor Blum, any questions? Counselor Gallagher? Counselor Brown? Counselor Wheel? Counselor Savabi?
Thank you for the history lesson.
I do have a question. What does observed mean? Are there not observed holidays?
Sometimes it's moved, like July 4 is on a Sunday.
Oh, when it's observed is the date that it actually...
Correct. So for example, June 19 this year is on a Sunday, so the observed federal holiday date is Monday, June 20.
I never knew that. Okay, that's... And these are on a website, I take it? Can you really easily just see them?
Correct.
Looks good.
I move to approve on first reading, Council Bill 10, Series 2022, a bill for inordinance amending Article 11 of Chapter 18 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code regarding federal holidays and construction activity within Cherry Hills Village.
Second. Second.
I have a motion and a second. We'll need a roll call. Right? Yes.
Counselor Savabi.
Yes.
Counselor Wheel.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher.
Yes.
Counselor Blum.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Next up, Council Bill 11, Series 2022, amending Section 16320 of Article 3 of Chapter 16 of the municipal code concerning recreational structure setbacks in the 01 Open Spaces Park and Recreational Area Zone District, and this is first reading. And Planning, Manager, Workman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Just aside, I was really hoping you'd make that a little tougher for Ethan. First one in front of you. But anyways, again, thanks for having us this evening. I do want to just take a brief moment and just clarify that what we're speaking about this evening is strictly related to recreational structures and not recreational and/or accessory structures as part of these proposed code amendments. They are separately defined, separately treated structures, if you will. Within the village, there are five private clubs. They're all Zoned 01. Of all these private clubs, they all have accessory, excuse me, recreational structures as defined in Chapter 16 of the municipal code. However, there are no specific setbacks identified in the code for recreational structures in the 01 Zone District, and staff cannot find any in the code dating back to at least 2014. Staff has recently received inquiries from two of the private clubs about potentially adding recreational structures and what the necessary setbacks would be. Rather than interpret how these setback requirements may have historically been interpreted, staff is bringing forward this proposed amendment to create clarity. In a moment, staff will present code language that was present just before the modernization in 2019, then we'll run through the code language that currently exists, and then there are some options for council to consider, including the option that has been recommended to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the slide before you shows the language in the code, at least a section of the code, pre-modernization, so back in 2019. In this code, Chapter, excuse me, Article 11 of Chapter 16 regulated the 01 and 02 Zone Districts. For the 01 Zone District, the code referenced standards in the R1 section of the code for a few specific things. Those things included height regulations, minimum lot area, minimum yard requirements, minimum dwelling area, bulk plan standards, and floor area ratio. Within 16-5-30A through F, there was no reference to recreational structures. Specifically, the only portion of the reference code in the pre-modernized code was what's before you, which is 16530A through F, specifically C. That was the only section that talked about setback requirements in the R1 Zone District that were cross-referenced in the 01 and 02 standards. I do want to take a moment to just briefly run through the definitions of what the pre-modernized code had for these, just to give you a sense and a flavor for how it would be difficult to say that recreational structures would fall within these definitions. So with that, recreational structures in the old code were defined as swimming pools, tennis, and other courts when not enclosed. Once enclosed, they shall be considered accessory structures. Setback requirements in each Zone District shall apply. In the pre-modernized code, dwelling was not defined. However, the term dwelling, single-family was, and it was defined as a detached residential dwelling, other than a mobile home designed for and occupied by one family only on a stable and permanent basis. Dwelling unit was also defined as a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, meaning the definition of family, including permanent improvements and provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Public building, which is also on this slide, was defined as a building open to the general use, participation, or enjoyment of the public, and owned or operated by governmental entity or agency thereof. Public buildings also include churches. So again, no mention, no reference to recreational structures. Paul, I was going to say your slides weren't moving forward, so... That's... Okay. Sorry. That's fine. I would rather have you say that than have me punch your buttons over here, assuming. So on the slide before you right here is the current language in the code. In the current language, or in the current code, Article 3 of Chapter 16 regulates all lot building and structures regardless of the Zone District. But unlike the pre-modernized code, this current code does not cross-reference any standard in the R1 Zone District that should be applied to the 01 Zone District. Instead, the code regulates building height, lot area setbacks, and FAR in the 01 Zone District in three separate tables. Just for the benefit of council, the definitions currently in the code for recreational structure is a swimming pool, tennis, or other play courts when not enclosed by walls. Safety fences are not considered enclosures for this purpose. Building is defined as an enclosed roof structure intended for the shelter or enclosure of persons, animals, chattels, property, or substance of any kind. The term quote "building" includes portions of the structure that are not fully enclosed, such as covered porches, balconies, patios, attached decks. The term "building" does not include uncovered, at-grade hardscape elements, parentheses, walkways, concrete slabs, paved areas, pool decks, et cetera, closed parentheses, that are installed adjacent to the building. Again, nothing that talks about recreational structures. In preparation for this code modification, not only did we research the previous code, we also looked at some of the most recent applications to add recreational structures on these private clubs. While most of those applications do reference a compliance with setback requirements, only one of the applications has any detail or analysis about what setback requirements were used for that structure. And that is from the Arapahoe County, or excuse me, the Arapahoe Tennis Club Expanded Use Permit in 2015. That analysis in that application suggests that accessory structure setbacks from the R1 Zone District were used, which would be logical since the previous code cross-referenced the R1 standards for setbacks. It would be logical to assume that they would, although not specifically referenced, it's logical to assume that they used those. And just for council's reference, those setbacks are unchanged during the code modernization. They were before and they are today, 75 feet in the front and 25 feet on the side and rear. Also in preparation for bringing this amendment forward, we analyzed existing conditions at either each of the five private clubs, and I do want to caveat that, right, we didn't go out and survey the properties and that, but the distances that you see on here are taken from the Arapahoe County Mapping Service called ArapaMap, and we use it essentially daily to determine distances and setbacks. So we do feel like it's a reliable source of information. But I just do want to caveat, it's not exact. The first one we looked at was the Cherry Hills Country Club. That site's about 186 contiguous acres. The setbacks for their existing recreational structures would be about 96 feet from university and 31 to 32 feet from the south property line. Those setbacks would comply with the R1 accessory structure setback requirements, assuming that university was used as the front. The next one we looked at was Buell Mansion, which is about 2.7 contiguous acres. From the east property line, it's about 74 feet to the recreational structure, and then, depending on where you measure, from 28 to 33 feet from the south property line. Again, those would comply with the R1 accessory structure setbacks if you used Buell Mansion Parkway as the front, which is north of the image here. The third one we looked at was Glenmore Country Club. That one's about 58 contiguous acres. Those measurements are about 44 feet and 56 feet from the south property line. Again, those would have complied with those R1 requirements if you used Glenmore Drive, which again is just north of this image, just off the image. The fourth one we looked at was the Arapahoe Tennis Club. That one's about six contiguous acres. It's roughly 27 feet from the north property line, 25 feet from the east property line, 75 feet from the south property line, and 40 feet from the west property line. I should note that the two courts that are in the southwest corner in the image here that are shown as 40 feet, those did receive a variance to the front setback requirement back in 1982. As part of that application, they did note that the front setback was 75 feet, again an indication of what historically had the setbacks that were used. And then the last one is the Village Club, which is about nine and a half contiguous acres. Setbacks there were 40 feet from the west property line, 13 feet from the east property line, and 31 feet from the north property line. Staff, in our research, we were unable to locate the initial permit for the recreational structure on the east side of the property, but all of the other structures would have met the R1 accessory structure setbacks if Bellevue were used, which is just south of the image here.
Sorry, quick question, if you could go back to that slide. Are those courts really the closest thing to the back property line? It kind of looks like the main building is closer.
Yeah, so...
Oh, that's a, that's a structure, not a recreational...
That's, that's correct. And just as part of the research, the Village Club did receive variances for the locations for those.
One question. Are using the words accessory structure the same as recreational?
No. Recreational structure is defined differently in our code than an accessory structure. However, in the previous code, in the 2019 version of the code, there was, there was a cross-reference in the 01 that said basically you have to use the R1 standards, although it didn't specifically include accessory structure setbacks. So we're taking a little bit of a connect-the-dots approach of what staff may have, what their thought process may have been in lieu of not having something specific in the code, since the old code cross-referenced the R1 for primary structures setbacks. It's our assumption that they would have used the R1 accessory structure setbacks as well. So again, terminology gets confusing, but they are defined differently in the code. So very quickly, in summary, the code is currently silent to specific setbacks for recreational structures in the 01 Zone District. We've received inquiries from two of the clubs regarding what setbacks would be required should they decide to pursue additional recreational structures. While not explicitly prescribed by the code, it appears that historically the R1 accessory structure setbacks were used because the pre-modernized code made reference to other standards in the R1 Zone District. The current code does not make that reference, and it's staff's opinion that the code should identify setbacks for recreational structures in the 01 Zone District to create clarity and provide predictability for adjacent property owners. So now we get into the options that are before you. The first option is to make no changes. This option continues to leave the setback requirements for recreational structures in the 01 Zone District open to interpretation and the historical practice of using the R1 Zone District accessory structure setback requirements. Should be noted that the current code, again, does not reference any R1 standards like the pre-modernized code. Potential pros is it would allow the Director of Community Development to assume historic practice and remain consistent without specific language. Some potential cons with this is that it continues to create confusion for staff, applicants, residents, and elected and appointed officials, leaving the potential for arbitrary and capricious determinations. Again, another potential con is that standards may change over time as the director changes and new interpretations are made, since there's not specific language. And then finally, it does not provide predictability for nearby property owners as it relates to potential impacts from recreational structures. The second option would be to create a new table, Table 16320D, to regulate the setback requirements for recreational structures in the 01 Zone District based on the contiguous acreage of the club. Some potential pros with this is it creates clarity for setback requirements for recreational structures in the 01 Zone District. It's customized so that no existing structures are made legally non-conforming, and Planning and Zoning Commission had a little bit of discussion related to non-conforming at their meeting. And the gist of it is that the issue with a non-conforming structure is that if it's ever destroyed or removed, it can't be constructed in the current location. It would have to meet whatever the requirements are when it's submitted for permit. The issue with some of the smaller private clubs is that that can have, moving those courts or moving those recreational facilities can have some serious impacts in terms of the functionality of the site and how it circulates and how it's used and some of that kind of stuff. So that was some of the discussion we had at Planning and Zoning Commission. Some other pros of this is that it responds to the different size, nature, and needs of the clubs based on the different size constraints. Four is that it provides predictability for nearby property owners as it relates to potential impacts from recreational structures. Some cons with this option is that future applicants and staff would have to determine the contiguous acreage of the club to determine the appropriate setback requirements for proposed recreational structures. Another one that I would offer from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is that the, having three different thresholds seemed confusing for some folks, and so you'll see here in just a minute, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is essentially this version, but with just the one threshold, so two columns, the threshold being 10 acres. The third option would be, again, to create a new table and base the setback requirements on the R1 Zone District accessory structure setback requirements. Some pros with this is that it creates clarity. It appears to be consistent with historical practice. You don't need to know the acreage of the club, and it also provides predictability for nearby property owners. for nearby property owners. Some cons is that this option may create some non-conforming structures. It also implements a one-size-fits-all approach and ignores the existing conditions and size constraints of some of the clubs, therefore limiting their ability to more fully utilize their property. The fourth option would be, again, to create a new table, but base the setback requirements on the primary structure setback requirements for the O1 Zone District. Some potential pros with this is it, again, creates clarity. There's no need to know the acreage of the club. It creates consistency for all structures in the O1 Zone District, and it provides maximum predictability for nearby property owners. Some cons is that this one will likely create non-conforming structures, and it also implements a one-size-fits-all approach. So the fifth option, and the option that's been recommended to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission, is to create a new table that regulates the setback requirements for recreational structures in the O1 Zone District based on the contiguous acreage of the club. And the one threshold would be 10 acres and below, so that would be all of the private clubs except for Cherry Hills Country Club and Glenmore. The setback requirements there are shown on the left-hand side of the screen, and then the Cherry Hills Country Club and Glenmore would have the setback requirements on the right, which are consistent with the historic practice of the R1 accessory structure setbacks.
This isn't what's in our, this says over three and up to 10, but don't you mean 10 acres and below?
That's correct. That's correct. It's a typo.
What's in the packet?
Sorry?
Yeah.
The one, the one in the packet that says.
Packet's correct.
That says on 10 acres and below. Yeah. That's what happens when you do custom pay, cut and paste. Some potential pros of this option is it creates clarity for setback requirements. It's customized so that no existing structures are made legally non-conforming, and it responds to the different sizes of the clubs based on their, their needs. It also provides some predictability for nearby property owners. Again, the potential con is that you'd have to determine the contiguous acreage of the club to determine which set of standards apply. That concludes the presentation. So before you, in your packet is the recommended motion. I'm not going to read this, but it's essentially to approve option number five in your packet, which creates a new table and creates the one threshold, which is the 10 acres and below. And then, depending on the size of the club, the applicable setback requirements would apply. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Do you have questions? Counsel Brown?
No questions, but I really want to say kudos to you and the Planning Commission, because I think you've come up with the most viable solution. I always think the simpler, we keep it cleaner, it's better for everybody, and I might give you guys kudos on that, so I'm all in favor of that.
Counsel Gallagher. Counsel Brown. Counsel Wheel.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Good presentation, Paul, for sure. Maybe, maybe you could bring a little more light to the difference between option five and option. Three, I believe. Yeah, my, my concern is that if I think about the master plan and our drive to preserve open space and, and all of that, at first I'm thinking, well, tennis court, swimming pool, it's surface level, it's not going to really obstruct. And then I start thinking about big, tall fences and wind screens and other things that really do create something that's not a lot different in many ways than a regular structure. And 10 feet seems kind of, kind of small if I'm a neighbor. So I'm, I'm struggling with that a little bit. I like the simplicity of, well, really both. I, you know, option three is, is simpler yet, and I realize it's one-size-fits-all, but, and, and also, tell me a little bit, if I have a non-conforming structure and I want to modify it or I want to do, you know, I don't think I'm encumbered. It's only if it's destroyed and, and then needs to be rebuilt. And then there are possibilities to ask for variances and things like that as well. But, but help me understand my dilemma here.
I'll do my best, Counselor. To respond to the first question is, agreed, 10 feet is relatively short. And that was directly based on the distance of the easternmost court on the Village Club and what we believe to be the, the distance from the street to the, to the court there. And so that's why the 10 feet is specifically and only applied to a street setback and not an adjacent residential lot line. Those would still be the 25 feet, which is consistent with the historical practice of the R1 accessory structure setback requirement, if that makes sense. So that was, that was, that was one of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that was one of the reasons that they felt comfortable making that recommendation moving forward. To respond to the comment related to non-conforming, essentially, if you have a non-conforming structure, you are allowed to make interior renovations and improvements to that without, without triggering anything. Once you start to do things to the exterior, you just can't increase the non-conforming aspect of whatever the structure is. So if you wanted to do an addition, it would just have to conform to the, to the requirements, and we would ignore, it's legally non-conforming, the existing portions that are outside of that. In the event it were destroyed by flood, fire, tornado, something of that nature, it would have to be reconstructed in compliance with the current requirements at whatever time the permit was submitted.
But again, the opportunity might exist to ask for variance.
That's correct.
All right, so, yeah, not that, not that, you know, but it, I mean, in a way, and the other thing that troubles me is, I understand now the, the street issue, but, but also we have the front setback being changed from 75 to 40, where most of the structures in the city are at least 75, right? So, so we've, we've got, we may have some exceptions that exist, but it goes back to that spacious look, semi-rural look. And, and my concern is if we open the floodgates, now it's not just we have two non-conforming structures relative to the current R1, we would have permission to create a whole lot of non, of, of structures that are much closer to front and side and so on.
Yeah, that, you're right. 40 is, is less than 75. What I would offer is that the 75-foot front setback is primarily for the R1 and R2 Zone Districts. The other R3, R3A, R4, R5 do have shorter front setback requirements, and so it, it's going to kind of depend on where that private club is in terms of how it quote-unquote fits with the other front setback requirements.
Can you refresh my memory about the other residential setbacks, front setbacks?
I can, but you'll have to give me just a moment. I don't have that memorized.
No, okay.
I can do a lot of them off the top of my head, but not, not those ones. If, if you're interested, though, I can get, or I can follow up with you separately.
And the 40 feet here is to, it feels like it's to accommodate an existing.
That's correct. It's, it's primarily based on the 40-foot existing setback for those two courts in the southwest corner of the Arapahoe Tennis Club.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
If you would like me to follow up, though, with those other setback requirements, let me know, and I can do that.
Well, I, that's okay. I mean, we'll end up voting on this before. Do you have a rough idea, or is it, you know, is it more like 75 or more like 40?
It's closer to 40.
Is it? Wow. Okay, thanks.
Counsel Savaby? I just, a follow-up question. When you, you said the Village Club east courts, you mean the west, west ones?
Yes.
They're, they're right next to that street, yeah. And it does have a fence up there, too, but, yeah.
The ones that are closest to Dahlia.
So 50 is the front? No, it depends on the zone district. Okay. There used to be a volleyball court there, and they put the sport courts in.
I played there, and I forgot what. Oh, no, I'm talking about the Village Club.
Oh.
You, you said the Village Club was the far east court, you mean the far west?
No, far east.
No, far east. In that northeast corner.
East, northeast.
Wait a minute.
They're like, something, they, they converted them from something else.
Yeah, it was a.
Are these pickleball courts or something?
I don't know exactly what courts they are.
Yeah, they, and they used, it used to be a sand volleyball court.
People came in with a permit to request that.
Yeah, it was a.
That sparked the whole administrative.
Yeah, okay, I remember now. I thought you were talking about the tennis court, but tennis courts, they're, they're far away from the street. They're 40 feet. That's what I was thinking, I couldn't imagine why, I didn't, forgot about this. All right, I guess if, to sum it up, really, the difference between five and three is, Counsel Wheel was saying, is really you're attempting to, five attempts to kind of incorporate to exist some existing issues.
That's exactly right.
Three basically says, there'll be no more like this, but we're, you know, these will be grandfathered in, obviously.
That's correct. That's, that's correct.
The issue is there, and we have a second reading, everybody can, can mull it over and see what they think. I, I take, I take Counsel Wheel's point, so, all right. If there's no more discussion, I think we, I'll entertain a motion. We roll.
I move to approve on first reading, Council Bill 11 Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance to amend Chapter 16 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code to add specific setbacks for recreational structures in the O1 Open Space Park and Recreation Area Zone District as identified as option five in the proposed amendment section of the May 3, 2022 staff memo.
Second.
A motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counsel Savaby?
Yes.
Counsel Wheel?
No.
Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counsel Gallagher?
Yes.
Counsel Blum?
Yes.
Passes on first reading. Moving on to Council Bill 12 Series 2022, amending Section 2120 of the municipal code concerning designation and description of city council districts. We had a discussion of this, but this is the first reading, and City Clerk Gillespie and Planning Manager Workman, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of city council. Staff is bringing back this issue to you tonight as a council bill for redistricting our city council districts. Just as a reminder, the Home Rule Charter states that following each federal decennial census, the city shall modify the council district boundaries as needed to ensure that districts shall be contiguous and compact wherever possible and shall have approximately the same number of voters. We are using 10% as our threshold to, to use for that approximately same number of voters variable. And based on the 2020 census, the difference between the most populated and least populated districts is 18%. Therefore, redistricting is required. In order to redistrict, we'll be amending Section 2-1-20 of the code. And just as a reminder, previous redistricting in 2012, we had 39% difference at that point, so this is much smaller. The study session was held on April 19th. Staff explained methodology and presented three options for council discussion. Council discussed variables to consider while redistricting, including neighborhoods, trying to keep neighborhoods together, the difficulty of keeping all neighborhoods together, how much work that would entail, and staff's options were really based on the fewest changes between districts, and we'll, we'll go over those a little bit more to refresh your memory. At the end of the study session, staff received direction from council to move forward with option two, and also to remove the narrative description of the districts that is currently in the municipal code and instead reference the map. So that's the council bill that's before you tonight. I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thank you, Laura. I do have the same slides from the, the study session. I'm not going to go through them in the same detail unless you all have questions or would like for me to, so please stop me if you have questions. Again, just to refresh your memory, the council, or the census provides information at the state level, the county level, the tract level, and the block level. Cherry Hills Village has two tracks and 114 blocks. The yellow are the two tracks and the green are the 114 blocks. By going through the census website, you can determine, they, they provide you the information in terms of by block what the population is and how many housing units are in each block. And that's the information we use to determine the current population by district. What we did was we took all of those blocks, overlaid them on the existing council district map, and identified the population per block and the number of housing units per block. If you'll recall, there are scenarios where council, a census block overlaps council districts. In that scenario, what we would do is take the total population of that block, divide it by the number of housing units to get the ratio of people per housing unit, and we would count each lot in each of the different council districts, take that lot count and multiply it by the people per household to give you how many people resided in that council district. And that's how we solved for that solution. When we did all of that, as Laura mentioned, there is an 18% difference between the most populous and least populous council district. We did run through three separate options, as Laura mentioned. The second one was the one that council had directed. This is the first option. Council discussed this, but ultimately felt like it would be a cleaner and easier to, to tell folks what council district they were in by using the existing Holly Street there. And so that's the option that has been brought forward to you this evening for, for a vote. In this scenario, District 2 would be the least populous, District 3 would be the most populous, and the difference would be 9.8%. Then if you recall, the third option, which wasn't really an option, was to essentially split the Covington neighborhood north of Mansfield there, I believe that's Mansfield. And for a variety of reasons, council did not want to move forward with that option. So with that, the motion before you this evening is to approve Council Bill 12 Series 2022 on first reading, and then we would see you again on May 17th, I believe, for second reading. That concludes our presentation, but if you have any questions, please, please ask.
Any questions at all?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
But I've got a question on this. This is, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move to approve Council Bill 12 Series 2022 on first reading. A bill for ordinance amending Section 2120 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning designation and description of city council districts. Shouldn't we add something in there saying, as shown on Exhibit G? Because we don't really define what we're doing.
The, the proposed council bill does have an exhibit, an attachment itself.
Okay. I'm just wondering if I should say, as shown on Exhibit G?
In the motion. Yeah, should we add that to the motion, though?
Yeah, that's my question.
To make it specific.
Okay. Same motion adding, as shown on Exhibit G.
Exhibit G.
Second.
We have a motion of second now, and you're discussing. Hearing none. I'll take a roll call. Laura, please.
Counsel Savaby?
Yes.
Counsel Wheel?
Yes.
Counsel Blum?
Yes.
Counsel Gallagher?
Yes.
Counsel Blum?
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you, everyone, for your work. Thank you for your work on that. And next up is Council Agenda Autumn 9D, amending the city council rules of procedure. Actually, you want just direction, not a motion for this, just discussion? Actually, I'll give it, I'll give you the floor. Laura?
Thank you. We are bringing this back from the January meeting when Counsel Wheel brought up a suggested amendment to the city council rules of procedure. According to Article 9 of the rules, the, any amendment has to come before council first and then can be acted upon at the next meeting. So this is just to provide an opportunity for discussion and, and direction to council, or to staff, excuse me, if council so directs, and staff will bring back a resolution making the amendment. The proposed amendment is to Paragraph B of Section 6 of Article 3 regarding executive sections, and it would just clarify that a vote to go into executive session shall be approved by a two-thirds, two-thirds or more of the council members present on rule call, as opposed to. as opposed to just two-thirds majority. So the staff is happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I, I did note that some of our ordinances say that, too. They're supposed to be, maybe borrowed from our ordinances, so.
Yeah, the, the language really comes from state statute, so that's where the.
From, from what?
State statute.
Oh, state statute, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's lawyers who drop the ball and weren't paying attention like you do, Counselor Wheel.
I did actually have one quick question. I, I, and I completely agree with the intention of making this change, but two-thirds of the members present could be two people. I mean, because there's no requirement that we have a quorum, or is there?
There is.
So, so is it?
Two-thirds of four.
Two-thirds of a quorum.
Two-thirds of four, right?
Right, I mean.
Quorum is, quorum is four.
So we, yeah. We can have a council meeting without a quorum. We just can't technically vote on anything. So I guess we couldn't take this, we couldn't vote on any motion anyway if we didn't have a quorum? Okay.
Okay, thank you. I guess we can, directions to ring that forward and go ahead.
Okay.
Take care of that, maybe look at the rest of our statutes and see something down the road. All right, it is, I have, it's the time, 7:17. I can, on our recess, the meeting of the, regular meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council and, and move into a meeting of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board at, I said, 7:17. Call it to order and have a roll call, please, Laura.
Board Member Zafabi?
Here.
Board Member Wheel?
Happy to be here.
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Chair Stewart?
Here.
Board Member Gallagher?
Here.
Board Member Sheldon is absent, Board Member Blum?
Here.
I move to consent agenda item, which is approval of minutes of April 19, 2022 meeting. Was every, I guess everyone is in attendance to that meeting? I understand a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And, thank you. It is now 7:18. We are very, very moving with speed. Through that, we will adjourn at 7:18 of the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board and reconvene the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. I have a short report. Several things. On April 20, we had a meeting of the Hampton Avenue Citizens Advisory Committee. I think I might, oh, you were on Jay, I think, too. Which is pretty interesting. I mean, actually, they have people up and down. Devonshire was on the HOA, up and down Hampton, talking about improvements to safety and to aesthetics of the, of the, of Hampton. And we had breakout sessions, and it was, I did mention, bring up our master plan, that our master plan says, please, you know, we direct traffic to the arterials, and we, and we don't have cut-through traffic through our village, and that we shouldn't, you know, we should look to improving. I think everybody was on board in improving the, the flow of traffic on Hampton and eliminating the backups that come way down, looking at synchronization, looking at expanding that, any way of improving the traffic flow along Hampton so that we don't have cut-through traffic through our village in that compliance with our master plan. We also raised in our breakout group the action, the, hazard rate at Pino's and at our commercial district where cars are coming off and, and hitting our commercial district, and our solution for that. So it was long, I think it's well on its way. They're going to have, they're going to have a lot more meetings and then come up with a master plan for improving Hampton. It could look really nice, because it's probably long overdue. On the 21st, we had a, I attended a meeting of the Cherry Hills East HOA. They had their meeting here. Jay was also in attendance. Kind of the issues there was, they're talking about a single trash collection system, which makes a lot of sense. Apparently, they have everybody in their community on board, 100% participation to move to one single contractor rather than several. They also raised a few other things, composting. They wanted to talk about composting, and we might want to put, I know we've talked about that before. Cell phone coverage, a lot of discussion about that. We had a detailed discussion about what it takes to bring a new cell tower and to improve the cell phone coverage for Cherry Hills East. And I think it was useful to discuss that with them. We kind of identified how, what a big process it is and who owns the cell towers and who rents them, Verizon renting space. And you have to convince everybody else to put their, put their antennas up there before, before Zayo is going to, is going to spend any money building towers. So that was a good discussion. We also talked about the sales tax issue in November and that issue of remote sellers. I think, I think it was pretty well received. I think they, the reaction was kind of, you know, was one of kind of understanding and kind of acceptance, I think, of, you know, of it. And a lot of nodding heads, and nobody said hell no. So it was, it was understanding the issue. I think for a lot of them, it's the first time they'd heard about it. So that's maybe, indication of the job we have ahead. On the 22nd, I had a CML board meeting, and also I was on, I'm on the Sam Mamet Awards Committee. We, we chose the Sam Mamet Award for this year. On the 25th, I was attending the Rappel County Open Space and Trail Advisory Board meeting. I noticed on our consent agenda, we had funding from the open space, from that's, that's the same entity that's giving us that money every year, which is nice, sales tax money. On May 5, coming up, I have a meeting with the Metro Mayor's Caucus, Executive Committee and Circle Committee. And then next week, I have a mayor's lunch with the mayors in the South Metro area. Inglewood is hosting. I did want to raise, just today, on my phone came up the Property Tax Senate Bill 22238 that will affect our tax rates for 2023, tax calculations for that and reduce them. So we'll have to put that in, plug that into our calculations and our formulas for, for that. And I think that affects both real, commercial property and residential property. That's my report. Any other report, Counselor Blum?
No, no report, just a question to Jay. Is it only going to take 10 weeks to get a poll to put a speed limit sign up?
Unless I order it from Excel. Then it'll take two years. Yeah. Yeah, it's, because it's a C dot spec poll. They had one in stock when I first asked, before we had signed, but then we had to order one. So hopefully, we see that sooner than 10 weeks.
Thank you for doing that.
Yep.
Just like to say, regarding the charter amendment that we may be seeing, once the signatures are collected, it is unfortunate that the, the people bringing that forth did not have discussion with us earlier. That's all.
Counselor Brown?
No report.
Counselor Wheel?
Thank you. Couple of things. First of all, going through the packet, and I'm reading the submission that we had for GFOA, and certainly want to thank Jessica, and I realize maybe among your last efforts, but still terrific. I mean, really terrific package and well done. And so thank you for that. The, I had my one-on-one with Chris, and pun intended, we are starting to get traction on electric vehicles. So I'm really excited, and I understand Jay's found some lawnmowers and things like that, that are commercial grade that might, might also be a possibility. So I'm, I'm real enthused, real enthused about that. And that's all I have, thank you.
Counselor. Yeah, I know that we actually talk about lawnmowers at Metro Mayor's, but they're a big cause of the ozone, those little engines. So that's, that'd be a good deal. All right, City Manager?
Yeah, we'll let the directors provide one first.
Real quick, we will be having a lot of construction at Holly and Quincy this summer. You'll actually see delays starting tomorrow. XL, it will be replacing some major gas valves directly in the street at that intersection. And then later this summer, Denver Water is rehabbing the entire pump station, which is on the, the little park, as well as in both Holly and Quincy. So you, we will see major delays here for the next few months at that intersection, along with trying to finish up the undergrounding and starting the Hudson undergrounding at the same time. So we will have a lot of activity in that area, and we will do our best to keep traffic moving.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Couple of things. Saturday, this past Saturday, was Drug Takeback Day, and officers were out there. We collected 69 pounds of unwanted drugs this year. So it was, it was a successful event. And we had a lot of the residents that came by and were very appreciative that we, or the city participates in the, in the annual event. So we, that was a good deal there. On a second note, I want to thank city council and the mayor for approving the body camera program. That's going to be a significant change on how we do business here in Cherry Hills Village. So it'd be a lot of training. There's large expense, but I, I thank you for approving that. And I want to offer special thanks to Director Sager, City Clerk Gillespie, and our city attorney for all the help they gave me. This was a big project that I, kind of got handed to me, and it went well. But without their help, I couldn't have got it done. I thank all of you. That's it, thank you.
Real quick, I was able to look up the front setbacks for the other zone districts. In the R3, the front setback is 50 feet, and in R4 and R5, the front setback is 25 feet. So, and, and I'll include those in the, in the information for second reading, just so that it's there for everybody. The, the master plan, second community survey closed at the end of last week. We're still going through, obviously, the details of, of what responses we got. I will say, we got over 120 responses, which we are actually very happy with, considering it was online only and available by paper in here. It was, it was expected, because you're not asking some of the same questions we were in the first one, i.e., would you be open to different land uses? So, so we're happy with the responses we got. We're going through the effort to really try and figure out what that means. In that same vein, we have a study session with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's kind of a joint working session with the PNZ and our CAT next Wednesday evening. And we're going to go through those survey results as part of that meeting. But the exciting news is, is that as part of that meeting, we're also going to start looking at some draft language for some guiding principles and for some goals and for some action items. So we are really getting to a point in that project where the rubber meets the road, and we'll continue to keep council updated on that. That's it for me.
To go along with Commander's speech about the body cameras, we were notified by the state that they had additional grant funding, so we modified our application and asked for the remaining $30,815. We've been told we're approved. We just don't know for how much yet, so we will keep you posted and let you know. But we will have some additional funding for that as well.
And to be clear, that is, should also go in the tally box of kudos for Director Sager for following up on that. It, it is very possible that what we will have to pay year one, we'll change after that, obviously, but what we'll have to pay year one is really hardly anything. And that really, for that second allotment, really, Jessica really knocked it out of the park again. I just have a few things, and then Laura's got some updates as well. I am happy to report that our candidate for police chief, Jason Lyons, past all posts, offer thresholds, or whatever the phrase is. I'm not sure what that is. So our new police chief, Chief Lyons, will be starting on May 23. It's good news. Similarly, after reposting the jail for finance director, we, we found a finance director as well, who will be starting May 23 also. So May 23 will be quite the day here. The, the, we did meet with the I-25 and Bellevue Interchange Committee, the technical committee. This first, it's two phases, really. The first phase is just to look at, on the ground, where the, where the, the last option that they're evaluating could fit. And if there's enough support for one or all of those options, they would then move it on to looking at traffic. You know, what do the modeling show? How much, what does it do to traffic on Bellevue, on Quin, not Quincy, but, you know, Union, those kinds of things? There were two options. Each option had an A and a B, so four total. Three of the four eliminated some or all of the access from or to I-225 and Bellevue.
Do you mean like from Bellevue to 225?
Depending on the options, sometimes it was just one of those. One of the options eliminated all connections. So there's no way to get from Bellevue to 225 on the highway. You'd have to go down Bellevue, turn left, and then get on 225 at DTC Parkway. That, it was an initial feedback from Greenwood Village and Rappel County that would be a deal killer. But they would check. Assuming that's true, there's really one option then that could theoretically be carried forward to traffic analysis. I will tell you, based on the conversation and hearing some of the traffic people talk, though, if there is a silver lining to that last option, I do think it will likely reduce what I would call southbound cut-through traffic through Cherry Hills Village to the interchange, because you get no benefit by approaching the Union interchange ramps from the north, because there is no, you, you would, you'd basically be coming from the north only to then turn around and.
Go back.
Go back. Operationally, the model will show a pretty big reduction in cut-through traffic in Cherry Hills Village. With that said, it probably won't show as much of a reduction as the Bellevue-only Spooey option. But nonetheless, I still think that's silver lining. I'll report back when they do finish the traffic analysis, assuming this one option still goes through. I've asked the team to come and give another presentation to you. So time's not right yet, but I'm on it.
Was there a discussion of Spooey as well? Anybody, anybody raise that?
That one's already been evaluated. The Spooey and the Split Diamond, the traditional Split Diamond, have already been evaluated. This last activity is only to evaluate the Split Diamond Plus. That's all they're looking at, so. Finally, regarding a follow-up for our conversation regarding the potential ballot measure regarding remote sellers and the like for this November, just wanted to let council know that we're entering a new phase now. This is, this is going to become a little bit more of it, that educational phase that we talked about at the study session. And staff and the consultants are working on creating a schedule and with the, you know, the, where there's opportunities to provide some education to our residents at various groups, whether that's HOAs or whatever. So, and, and Laura will talk to you a little bit more about that. The one specific within that next phase, as we sort of gear up for a new, instead of really trying to understand and get a finger on the pulse of the community, we're now entering this education phase. One of the specifics is the committee. And two items on that, again, we have a list that we're working on that we'll provide to you of folks that you've mentioned so far. But we are still looking for a chair, a co-chair from council. Last time we talked, Counselor Gallagher had mentioned that he might be a possibility. It's my understanding that's not possible anymore. So I guess I would sort of throw this open to the rest of council if there's another potential co-chair to this committee. And I'm not trying to put anybody directly on the spot. So if you think you might be interested, you can let me know that you'd like to get back to us. That works, too. After the, well, there, there might be some work that the committee might be able to do before the ballot, ballot language is set. But most of the work, most of the heavy lifting will be done after the ballot language is set.
That'd be awesome, terrific.
That'd be great. We will let Kyle know. And so there's some other things that Laura can talk to you about, but big picture, just get ready. We're now sort of, you know, summer's here, a lot of meetings. Again, we don't think it'll be seven, eight, nine things that we'll be asking council to do these education presentations on. But two or three would be great, if at all possible. And especially if it's like your own HOA meeting, for example. That might be really helpful. So just, just by way of example.
Chris, what's the timing on getting us up to speed in terms of talking points, practicing?
That is such a great segue to Laura.
That's on my list. So we did talk to Kyle about that. He is working on a presentation. He is working on a presentation to show to all of you, and we thought it would be best to come up with a series of time slots and have two people, two counselors at once, have a Zoom call with him, go over the presentation, have questions answered, make sure that you understand and are comfortable with those presentations and talking points. So we'll be sending that along to you shortly.
And Kyle would likely be joining folks for, and myself. We'll both be joining you. Kyle may not join you for everyone, especially as, if it's a repeat performance on your part, but yeah, it won't be just Kyle and you. We'll have staff there as well.
One follow-up to the finance director, that, she'll be the treasurer, too, right? So are we bringing forward a council resolution for the next meeting?
Well, it's on, what date is it on? June 7th?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Anything else? The good of the, I know there's a hockey game or something someone talked about.
No, we got a couple more. Yeah, let's go and talk about that one.
Oh, city attorney, I don't want to pass you by.
She's got a couple more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
Sorry, we have a couple more with the sales tax, potential ballot issue consultant. So related, back to the committee members, we do have a list from you all of potential residents who would be good on that committee. Our consultant thinks it would be a very good idea for the first contact with those people to come from you all, from council members, and so we're hoping that some of you could volunteer to make some of those initial calls to invite those people to serve on the committee. And we were hoping you could let us know by this Thursday, if that would be something you'd be willing to do.
Laura, can you remind us who we offered to you? I don't remember.
The list of names, yeah, I can send that out.
We'll send it out.
Send that out to everybody.
And then if you just want to write your name next to somebody or something, or just let us know...
Let you know.
Hey, I'll call this one and this one.
Sure, sure. And then also on Thursday, we're planning on posting the frequently asked questions that you all reviewed with Kyle on the website to start making that open to the public, so...
So you might start getting calls.
Yep. And I think that's it.
Now, the city attorney. All right, given the hockey game, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Until next time.
Thank you, everyone.
Mayor, if you could just lastly, if you did want to...
Pardon me?